Good evening, everyone. We're gonna go ahead and come to the meeting order now. Order this time. Mr. Morris, will you please lead us in our prayer place, sir?
Lord, we thank you for this day that you've given us. And thank you for the blessings that you pour out upon us each and every day. We thank you for each person here today and the families that we're representing. Ask that you would continue to bless them as only you can. Lord, we lift those up in the city whose lost loved ones and be with them in their time of sorrow. As we go about the business of the city, give us understanding, patience, and wisdom to be able to go forth and do the things that we need to do to make Algenia a great city to live in. Lord, just continue to guide us in ways you would have us to go. Pray this in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. All right, consider approval of the minutes of the July 1st, 2019 meeting, please. Everybody have time to review. Any recants or anything to change? No, no question. All right. Sound like PAs don't get a fit, so everybody talk up. All right. Motion to accept the minutes of the present? Second? All voters say aye. All right, thank you, thank you. All right, City Council will have a public hearing to hear citizens' input on the proposed charter amendments to be placed on the November 2019 ballot. So... They already opened, so...
Last time we decided to provide any comments?
Yes, they called me with certain...
What's all preference, Kansas?
As far as having a public comment on the charter.
Maybe just ask. Anybody have any comments or questions on the charter?
Is anybody here considering the charter? It sounds like... Nobody came in considering the charter.
How long is this going to last?
They're supposed to be posted.
They were posted, and then they're on Facebook.
Some in the paper.
There were two.
Bill Hancock is posting some of the propositions coming up in the newspaper. I think he's doing two at a time.
It was handled first.
Because there was 21 altogether. And anyway, so he's going through in the newspaper. Also, I think, Corey, did we not post them all on the website? And what it is, this is a change in the Constitution. We're just updating. We're not drastically changing it. A lot of the charter, I guess, rules or policies were developed in 1962 during the outset of the charter, and they've not been updated since then. And some of the state laws have changed, so we're taking some of these policies out, basically altogether, because state law trumps whatever we can, you know, are able to put in. So, and then there's just some other tidbits that it just kind of updates us to a proper, what is it?
Council manager form of government.
Council manager form of government. And so...
Our charter right now basically provides that all employees basically are recommended by the city administrator and then hired by the council, or can make it to where it's a true council manager form of government. So the city administrator, which we're going to change the city manager's name, will be the one who does the hiring and is responsible for supervision, and the council basically is responsible for him. And so it's more of a, so the council doesn't end up having to essentially run the day-to-day operations. We've got a hybrid charter right now, which probably made some sense back in '63 because we probably switched from a general law city, which is kind of how you do it, but now we're kind of trying to take that next step to, since we have a professional city administrator and we make a board of directors. So the departments that were only underneath him, by how, specifically the police and that fire, which are not underneath, or at least police is not underneath the city administrator at all. And so that's kind of how, and so I got all, all departments to be under the city administrator. So that's probably approved in the council. Yes. And so that's a big bulk of changes. As Tom said, some of the things are just, you know, things that are no longer applicable today. But that's the biggest changes in council manager. Making sure that's, that's the way we should go. Hope that's what voters think.
My question was, do we have an updated vote? We got here, some of us, we're talking about going to the city manager, taking out the city administrator language, but through this, you still got sending the city administrator everywhere.
That's because the first one says we're switching it all, and if that doesn't pass, then we'll carry on the city administrator. So basically, we give people the option, that we're the sort of option, that if it passes that one, then the word change will be all of that.
That's my question.
There's a couple, one, I wanted to, I went ahead and deleted the last proposition, which was changing all the pronouns to the master of the feminine, just because I'm not going to go through the whole thing and change them all. So there's not that many. We changed some already in the propositions. So I just deleted that. And then the other one I added, I basically took it out of the council manager form, made it a separate proposition, which is basically the section where it says that the council will be able to combine administrative departments, just the general language, but I went ahead and added, just made that a separate proposition. Some of these things are tricky because you're supposed to allow voters to, they can only vote on one topic, and so getting them one topic in some of the council manager form is kind of raw, and so I'm trying to make sure we give citizens the ability to vote against a certain thing, if they want to. I'm trying to look at, make sure we give plenty of options for that. So I added one, we're still at 23. What I'll do is, is if this is, if y'all are okay with going forward with this, I'll take this and put it in about language, and I would ask Bill and the media, basically, will y'all get, that'll be the final one that we issue or do that at our first meeting in August. It'll have about language literally will be, it'll be our ordinance calling direction line without language to go forward. So, so that's the plan. We have until August the 19th, which is our second meeting capacity, so if we have any changes, we're going to be...
Any other questions? Yes, sir?
Notice that it still says shall appoint?
No, it says may now. I just didn't send them to revise.
Okay, yeah, we're not looking for revised ones.
No, I just think I want to.
Okay, and then qualified for appointment?
Yeah, I did not add that, mainly because, at the end of the day, that's his call. I mean, that's kind of, I mean, he'll make the decision to appoint somebody. The fire, no, it's the...
The fire, she can take it from another department.
Basically, you know, the city manager's decision, and I know it seemed kind of strange, but at the end of the day, if you put in a word like qualified, what does that mean?
It's hard to define.
Yeah, I mean, you know...
It's hard to define what qualified means.
I mean, that's his decision will be to put the best person, whoever that is. Obviously, it could be in the process of getting their qualifications together, and it could be a number of things. Ultimately, that's, we're putting it in the hands of the city administrator manager, and then the council will ride herd on him, make sure that somebody there, because they get the approval. So, I mean, it's not going to be like it's just a, you know, shot in the dog, so...
Anyone else have any other questions about charter amendments? All right, moving along. Thank you. Any citizen who desires to address the city council on the matter not included on the agenda may do so at this time. Per the Openshooting Meeting Act, the city council may not deliberate on items presented under the agenda item. All presentations are subject to a five-minute time limit. Is anyone here not on the agenda, wish to speak? All these people? Yes, sir, Mr. Morris?
I read in the paper a while back that we would be installing street signs around town, and I hadn't seen that happen.
Yes, we've got some street signs. We ran into a little problem with some of the installation, some of the hardware with the street signs. We had to order some of the hardware, and a lot of our poles don't match. They're not the same size. You have a large pole, small pole, you know, with the diameter. So we're, it's going to take some time. We started installing some, but we've been thrown way behind with the rain and the mowing season. A lot of our guys that would be installing the signs or mowing and fighting trees and tree limbs that are all over town. So we're trying to, once we kind of start corralling some of that and get back to where we need to be, then we can put a crew back on. But it's, it's just some of the standardization, we just don't have any standardization in town. And then, you know, having to match the hardware, oh, you know, we have a lot of the signs, it's just the hardware. We got to match it up, and it's going to take some time. But it is something on our radar, and it's a prowess for us. We just got to get to it right now. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Ryan, would you ask a question, please, on frisbee golf?
We already discussed it.
Well, I know, but for the public information.
Well, we talked about frisbee golf. Here a while back, we approved some frisbee golf baskets to be purchased. Those came in last week. Went and looked at them today down at the shop. I talked to Mr. Paul Harris, who was helping develop the course, and he was talking to some people in San Angelo that are going to help volunteer to come put them in. We're looking at Saturday as a tentative date to start installation, so I'll have about four people there with equipment, and we're going to have some volunteers, Mr. Ross, Mr. Harris, Mr. Cortez, I believe, out of San Angelo. So we'll have some subject matter experts to help us install this, this equipment.
Transference, Ryan, transference.
It's just golf, not frisbee.
I'm sure Bob said this golf. I didn't?
Oh, he will.
I'm sorry, Ron, Dad.
Ash, bring that equipment back, would you tell me? Can we get, it's got the wrong label on it.
But we did inspect the baskets today, and they look really nice, Ross. Mr. Ross.
All right. Anyone else? Good. All right, thank you very much. City council may consider discussing, authorize a maintenance agreement with Montrose County. Is this in the packet?
I don't think it made it to the packet. What this basically is, something we talked about a few while back. I've gone to the commissioner's court inquiring about the property right behind the armory. It's also right behind where the water tower is, our water tank, the main water tank down around the park. There's a section of land back there that belongs to the county, and they have to come all the way in from Wingate to maintenance, start to mow it, basically, because that's part of that precinct. We offered to mow it, just for if we wanted to use it at any point in time. Ash reviewed the contract. Basically, it says we'll mow it, and we can have use of it for public use for, you know, anything we want, as long as it's public use, not illegal. But there's no money attached to this contract, it's just really a agreement, just a memorandum of understanding, I guess you might say. So that's the long and the short of it. We agree to mow it, and we can use it.
That would be a partial plan, not a section.
That is true.
The county's killing you, they have.
Yeah, they are. It's been that kind of regard.
You want to go for petting?
Yes.
All good?
Yes.
All right. Appreciate that, Bob. Watch out. All right. Motion to accept the maintenance agreement with Montrose County, please.
Still moving.
Second?
Please.
All voters say aye. All right. City council may consider discussing, authorize the quarterly hot fund account report from the Chamber of Commerce. You should have those reports.
Yes, you should have two. The one is, the top one is the P and L detail for the second quarter. The second one is, and it's a little bit easier to read and understand. We have a total of $20,571.93 in the account right now. Is there any questions?
Okay, so the $20,571.93 is for the chamber, that's how much the chamber has?
That's what the chamber has in hot funds.
Okay, so that is hot funds?
To those who are counted.
Okay.
That's our total.
So this isn't actually chamber funds, it's hot funds. Is that right?
It is the funds that the chamber manages. It is our tourism funds that the city uses. That's what I'm reporting on. Yes.
They're hot funds?
It is, it's on your P and L.
$37,000?
Yes.
$37,000, yeah, $20,000.
That was, yes, because we have not received our second quarter fund yet. That's why that's showing. But we gave a, an amount to, we gave $12,000 to the Ballenger Police Department for their chili pickoff during the ethnic festival. We gave $1,000 to the park, for, for the party in the park. That has one payroll out of it, that is, that also has all the ethnic festival advertising that has come out of that, too, since the last time we had a check. And that, that's all been approved. That was all approved through the hot fund, and they tried to... We paid $69,990 for the internet at the community center. And we have bought a couple of little stamps, which you'll see down there. We also paid for the mural and the prepping of the wall of the mural out of that house. So that was $5,000 out of that. Any other questions?
Maybe this is it for you?
This is it?
Appreciate the job you've done.
Thank you. This is our last report. It's starting now.
Can they have a reply?
They have hired two people. They split them into two positions.
Where do I go? Introduce them to the council.
I'm not sure. I'm out of the whip on that one.
Yes, yes, you are.
Any other questions on the funds?
Well, the new, can we be presenting it next time?
I don't know, I didn't.
All right, thank you very much. Motion to accept the quarterly hot fund account report from Chamber of Commerce?
Subdue.
Second?
Please.
All voters say aye.
All right.
All right, agenda item eight for Mr. Pike, on someone's last lesson, Hoss. He is going to be tabled. He is not able to be here, so we're going to keep it to the next meeting. So, motion to table the action concerning a complaint about police involvement for Mike Hoss.
I'm going to make motion to table that.
Second?
Second.
All voters say aye? All right, city council may consider discussing, authorize, process update on the condemned house of Jeanette Johnson and Matt Smith located at 501 South Broadway.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, nothing about it, but anyway, the house, we were trying to say we'd give more time. I have, I have, my brother passed, I've had to get all of us together, ten of us, and I can't get our five girls all together so we can see what we're going to do. And then my dad, Matt Smith, passed away, so we just buried him Saturday. So I'm trying to say we give more time so I can see what we're going to do with the house.
How much time do you think you might need?
About three more months.
So, maybe 15 July? So 15 October?
That one. And you know if I get it before, if I get hold of the rest of us, if I get hold of before, then I'll call and let y'all know.
Okay. Is that acceptable to everybody?
I'm willing to give her whatever she asks for.
Okay. What this is, several months ago, we went through some condemned houses, and we'd given her up till, I guess, 15 July, and she's just asking for a little more time.
Well, when you factor in the human side of it, I certainly should.
No, I mean, you know, you're dealing with family, so...
That's true. I'm all for it.
All right, motion to accept the extension of...
How long?
Well, you're going to ask...
So moved.
Second?
15 October.
Yes, sir. Second, all voters say aye. All right. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank Ms. Johnson. All right, city council may consider discussing with Holly Hubbard and authorize action concerning the playhouse in the front yard of 901 North Street.
Hello.
Heather?
Nice to meet you.
You, too.
Discussing the little playhouses in the front. Kids don't know the problem with the playhouse for children that I got. My children live with one mother, who's a good lady. So I work in the middle, I work two jobs full-time during telecommunication technician, and I'm also a caregiver. So I'm a father for my children, my mom, she takes care of them in the meantime. There was code violation, I guess, a gentleman came to the door telling my mom it was a code violation, but didn't tell my mom what the code violation was. I don't know how long later...
He didn't tell her.
Oh, he didn't tell her? No, that was, he didn't know what the code violation was. He didn't know what it was. So then later, my brother went where?
So when I asked my mom, my mom told me about it. Well, the guy lived at this park. Most of the times when there's a code violation, there's a code number, a way for you to look it up. What code are you violating? Well, I called the guy, he didn't answer, so I went down there, talked to him. He didn't tell me what code it was. Didn't tell me he had to find the code that we were in violation of. So right there, after I asked, three months later, my mom gets a letter saying that it has to be moved. Well, there's still no paperwork saying what code we violated. We're going to show what we're in violation of, of that playhouse to begin with. As it is, it's just a playhouse for kids. It's not a building, it's something more than just a playhouse.
We'd be off without, we were told that we had to do a building permit on it, which in no such way will be told about building permit, wouldn't we purchase the playhouse? I didn't think it had to have one.
And the business is out of here in bound, that is bought from, which if there is anything like that, the business should have told us, you need the apartments, this is where it needs to be.
Can you stand up?
Any business in any place has to go through, like, the council, am I correct? So they should know what permit, anything like that has to be pulled. Just like if you were to hire an electrician, he goes, okay, I need to get permits for this. If it's a new building, something like that, well, none of this is told. The guy said it can be placed anywhere, and that's where it was placed.
Well, it has to be, you have setback requirements in a neighborhood like that. Actually, you know, that's, you have a front yard and a backyard setback, and so it's a 10-foot setback, so you're in that setback.
We put, the reason why we put it in the front yard is the safety for my children. My children like to play in it, and they like to sleep in it. As I'm a little 10, my older brother, his sister, who's here from 14 to 17, stayed with me. But I will not put that playhouse by that alleyway, or in that...
And sadly, we don't have a backyard. He don't. No, we have a side of the house and a front yard. There isn't a back yard in there, back there, that have other... Here's my, here's my, y'all want to say there's a 10-foot setback in the front yard and backyard, correct?
Yes.
Well, if you go down in the alleyway, anywhere in town, you're going to find cars parked in the back, trailers, farm equipment. So why is a kid's playhouse being targeted when none of these other...
Well, front yard setbacks are different. Typically, most kind of cities, I'm still pretending they're wrong, old grandparents have the rear setback, but it's usually for a neighborhood and for the, it looks like it stands out like a sore thumb.
But it doesn't obstruct any view of turning, anything like that?
Well, it kind of does.
No, it doesn't. Because I turned my...
I did down, and I saw it. It's, it's, it's just in the front yard, it's, looks very odd. That's why you have set, front yard setbacks.
But it looks odd to you, is what it is, am I correct? Well, there's a house that has farm equipment on their front yard, but there's nothing about that.
Well, you're talking about open store, it's a totally different thing.
I understand what you're... But it's a setback, though, is what you're saying, so...
It should have been for a building, or just open store.
Yeah.
It's not, you have farm equipment.
Okay, one minute, hey, hey, hey.
I'm just trying to think of what...
That's the front yard.
You're telling me, but when I asked for it in paper and to be viewed and the code number and everything, your code enforcer said he did not know.
I can get it, Steve. If that's what you want.
Yeah, that's what we asked for, but why did it take three months for coming to this standard to have to be that way? Shouldn't your code enforcer know? If somebody calls and complains and he has to enforce a code, shouldn't he have this information before he goes to those people's houses and just tells them they have to move it? Should he have the proof upfront? Because anytime I've done anything, because I used to be an electrician, so when we had code enforcers, they stuck it with the number, where to find it, when it need to be changed. They had their proof, they had their reasons. Your guy had none of it.
Well, what he actually did was more, he just went up there as a courtesy to see what you planned on doing with the house. It's not, he wasn't issuing anything formally to you at that time. He was just inquiring, because, you know, for all we knew, it was going to be there for two weeks and then move on, or you were having some other...
He told us it had to be moved, there was no wanting to know. See, when I came down, he told me it had to be moved, there was no asking what our plan for it was.
But did he issue you anything formally?
He told me it had to move.
It was that formally?
If it comes straight to you as formally, to be like word to word?
No.
Well, then, no, it was not formally.
Yeah, it was, it was informal, an informal conversation. That's, that's exactly what it was. Okay. What, what I sent in a letter was more formal. Okay. But the thing is, you have these, these codes and ordinances for a reason. Okay? Part of it is because, uh, everybody on Eighth Street where, where you live, uh, their home values are a certain price. Okay? You know, you, you gotta be congruent with, with, with what you're doing. If, if someone wanted to build an addition to the front of their house, okay, which is not what you did, but if they wanted to, okay, they're gonna, we have to add certain codes and ordinances in place, a setback requirement, okay? We need a permit. Now, I understand the person that you bought this building from did not notify you that a permit may or may not be needed. Okay? But, uh, I mean, a permit is needed in order to set something like that up, because it doesn't just affect you, it affects your neighborhood in general, your neighbors. I can tell you, and I'm not doing this under any, but we got no less than fifteen phone calls the day that one up, by neighbors in your area.
So this playhouse is on the side of a house, you still get phone calls about this playhouse?
I doubt it.
Still have to have a building permit on it?
You would have to have a permit.
It's a playhouse for children.
No, I understand, but it's a, it's a substantial play.
So what kind of permitting?
Hold on, what, what, what kind of permitting?
Why do you have that, please?
A building permit? Because I'm not building that, so what would be the?
You need a permit to place a building.
So it would be a building permit, it'd be something else.
Right, 'cause you're not actually concerned.
It's still called a building permit, right?
It's still, it's still a, it's a permit.
Part of it's not sure the setback.
If you get a building permit, it's moving storage buildings, same.
But the place that it was bought from is a storage building place, so why aren't they?
Not the responsibility to tell you what certain requirements are.
But it's their place that informs that we need a permit on it, because it was just set up.
It's not.
They probably sell to five, six counties around, they're not gonna dump it.
No, that's never happened, silver. Maybe they're somewhere else, like you said.
Well, well, the thing is, here, no, I, I know level this here. I know where you got it from. Now, it's not his responsibility to tell you, you need a building permit from the City of Ballinger, or for the City of Golden, or Miles, or Royan, or Paydrop. Now, he may not have even asked where you put it, you know? And if you were putting it in the backyard and there, and it didn't violate a setback restriction, I doubt there would have been any problem. But, you know, the fact is that, uh, you do need a permit from the City of Ballinger.
That's not purpose, I'm not putting a front yard on the playhouse, that's for children. It's for children.
No, I understand that.
At this point, I think we'd work with them to come in.
Well, if this one's gonna happen, because it's an eyesore for people, and because we don't have the big names or the money, my playhouse is gonna go back. And my children are gonna miss something, because there's nobody here. Because everybody wants to have the money and then.
Well.
It's an eyesore.
I understand.
It's better looking at any damn houses around this town. Way better looking at any damn house around here.
Because here's my deal, y'all worry about that, what about the trees that are overhanging? What about the trees that are obstructing street signs? What about the sidewalks that are covered in grass? What about the roadways that grass is growing over into the road? It's not about summer moment, we have trees that are sitting in jail, why not give them the help?
I've, I've, I've inquired about that.
But it's just, it's all I inquire, it's all this.
But a playhouse, but a playhouse is more important than all this other stuff.
I'm not giving this.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for coming.
That's the issue I have with this, and I'm not playing devil's advocate, but, you know, we've been talking about this for weeks. I wish today that that was proven there, code enforcement would have knocked on that door and said you're in violation.
I did.
Instead of just dragging this out week after week, and you have to take time to drive by. So, you tell me, what is a violation here?
It's a setback requirement.
What is a setback?
Ten feet.
Now, Tommy told me twenty-five.
That's, that's all I'm thinking. Okay.
The thing about it too.
Yeah, twenty-five feet.
There's been so many complaints.
No, no, you could live around here.
No, I know, I know, Rick, I'm not challenging that, and, and I would go in with y'all on the permit, but it's just that somebody in code enforcement should have known the answer to this question from day one.
I did, I told him. I mean, I came down here, I told him it was a violation, it's a setback.
We just had to go find it, find this in the ordinance.
Taken all these weeks.
Well, at that point where they were, uh, I'm not gonna say hostile, but they, they, protected attitude that we saw here earlier, uh, we felt it prudent to get that involved in, in the.
So, what you said, twenty-five foot setback, it wrong?
No, it's right, twenty-five.
Rear, rear.
Yeah.
But I, it's in the setback, I knew that, I knew, so when we wrote the letter, we said it was in the setback.
Well, and a permit is required, which.
Yeah, I know, I would, I would not, I'd go to diss that thing there, I just want you to know, I wish we would have taken it here a long time ago.
We, we were.
Oh, they were doing their diligence, just.
Well, it takes a long time to do that.
There's been a lot of. A lot of things. A lot of things come up in between now and then, that was more pressing than asking.
But we, we were in the process. We were in the process trying to, uh, get all of our ducks in a row to go there.
No, I didn't set it in the side yard.
Well, I mean, honestly, had, had.
It wouldn't have been noticeable.
If they would work with us, we would even help them move it around to the side, somewhere that it, it would be more agreeable to the public, to, to the zoning and planning committee for them, but I don't think they have any interest, it's either all or none.
Right. It's what's on the list.
And that's, that's, that's the attitude, or, and I only wanna say that, this is, this is what we're facing when we're dealing with them, is the all or none approach. So.
Well, I don't like it being there, and you're, and you're in the same.
There it is, there it is. I, I mean, we could work with them.
With the side, it's gonna be a setback, we could give a variance, 'cause it's.
Right, but I mean, you know, we, we would like them to have it, you know?
I'm not trying to take it.
Not right there. And, and we would work with them, we would help them move it, we would help them find a good place for it. Uh, we would even, I mean, you know, we.
We're not gonna have it in the property, we'll find a good place.
Well, well, I mean, you could move it around to the side, we have dog pen, and we could move the dog pen, you know, I mean.
But Pat, I do think it obstructs traffic.
I do think, that's why you have, that's why you have setback, when you're driving down the road and you're looking to the right, you're, you're, it does obscure a little bit, 'cause I drove down that road.
I tested it in the setback, it doesn't show.
And, you know, if, you know, there is just a, I mean, it, the reason it stands out like a sore thumb, because it's stuck in the front yard. I mean, if you put a storage building the same way, I don't care if it, you know, you wouldn't be allowed. I mean, that's, it's, it's for uniformity, the single-family neighborhoods as well, to, to make them attractive.
I understand.
Well, or at least, or at least not devaluated. So, anyone else? Guess what?
It's the value, the market value of our house, that.
I mean, that.
Of course, I don't live on that street, but still, it, it's horrible, it's not to that.
Well, it's a market value, it's also the placement of it, it's.
That's a cause of brick.
Well, if the people would clean up their backyard and their side yard, that could make that work.
Well, we, we, we would love to work with them, it's just, it's difficult. So, I mean, we gotta do what we can to, to, to get through this with these, these individuals. I don't know where we're left now, other than to, I, I guess she came up here to voice her opinion, or their opinion. I, I don't know if there's anything to vote on, and, and, and vote for.
I mean, I, I submit she won't, I mean, again, I, I would think we would work with her to move it to the side yard.
We would love to.
Or help her, and that's, I would offer to her again, maybe in a less hostile situation, maybe go to the house, talk to her.
Like, 'cause, you want, you want.
If they walk, then I get in my district. They walk, she said, if I was to send it back, you'd say?
One thing I'd look at, I mean, we're talking about twenty-five foot setback, there's also one on the side. Right, people in five foot. Yeah, we have to give us some variance to say, at least it'd be safer than.
Well, again, you know, we can work with them in which way we can, you know, to move it around the side, if they need a variance, we can go with PNC, get the variance. You know, as long as it's appealing and attractive for all sides, and, you know.
Side, would you submit that proposal to them?
Uh, we will, uh, we will definitely. And, uh, and we'll try to.
As long as it's not as safety issues as far as line of sight being on the side as well, 'cause that's where you have it.
It won't be as bad on the side.
No.
You're not worried about a cross traffic coming through.
No, it's just as long as we make.
Next thing I would wanna say is, one minute. What are we gonna do by this date, you know?
Well.
What you said, was people calling.
In the demand letter that we sent, there was a specific date sent there. We'll have to refer back to it, but, uh, uh, as of the day it was sent, uh, they had thirty days to remedy the situation, or face fine, or.
Issue a citation to them, is that what they did?
Issue a citation, we would, uh, we also had the ability there to pick the, the house up, uh, and remove it for them. But we'll contact them, and I'll, I'll try and.
But she clearly stated she was not gonna put it in the back.
Yeah. Yeah.
Because it's safer for them, she says, for her kids to play right in the front yard.
On the busy side of the street.
Back yard, 'cause they can see, that was why she feels like it's their space.
And, and it may be that she ends up having the company come pick it up, I, I don't know. Well, I'll talk to them and try and get this resolved.
That's probably what'll happen.
I, I think that's what will happen.
I feel bad, I don't know. And hold on, we'll, we'll, we'll.
Well, I mean, had they come to us beforehand, we could have helped them.
Send out the letter.
Right, had they come seeking a permit, then we could have, we could have worked with them and helped them find a, a suitable position for it. The problem is, you know, they didn't, they didn't go get the permit, which, uh, which has led to where we're at now, so.
Let's say, you wanna go meet with them, I'll go with you. Let's say, my district, my people be happy.
Yeah, yeah.
That's possible, but I don't know if we can have it, based on the conversation that shares.
Right, well, we'll, we'll, we'll continue to try and work with them and see what we.
Putting it in the letter stands, by the days have done, and we'll issue a citation as soon as we're done.
Right.
No action on the item.
Do we table this?
No action on the item ten at this time. All right, consider approval of building permits.
Okay, we have one, the oil, the courtyard, the public, city, we're in a ten by sixteen by ten with orbital building. And, uh, everything okay, he's not paying their rent?
She's within her setbacks.
Yeah.
All right, motion to approve building permit that's presented, please.
Sub move.
Second?
Second.
All favors say aye. All right.
I think I say that.
My voice corrects.
I say, cool. Kansas City Ministry, five week report, please.
As well, I know former city attorney Ed Brownstad passed away Monday, twelve a.m. I just wanted to acknowledge that he was a huge part of this council for, I don't know, over sixty years.
Over sixty years.
Sixty. And, uh, I mean, it's, it's a loss for the community, uh, his, uh, Alliance Club, which he was part of, I mean, everybody that knew Ed, that would have, uh, I guess had a very good experience. So, I mean, it's, I just wanted to acknowledge the, the loss and, and.
Do what? Contribute?
And the contributions, uh, that he is, uh, the legacy that he's left with the City of Ballinger. So, uh, I believe his memorial service was Saturday at two o'clock, uh, here at.
His overflow.
Really large, and.
overflowed overflow.
Right, so, uh, on another note, we had another member of, of our community pass away yesterday, or day before, uh, Drew Crenshaw, Saturday. Uh, huge devastating loss. Personally, she was, uh, one of my friends, I mean, my, my daughters are really good friends, they grew up together, in the same class, so, uh, that's gonna hit the, the community hard as well. Yeah, so, uh, moving on, uh, we had one of our Ballinger Police Department, uh, employees, Ernest Juarez resigned, uh, July the eleventh. This is from, uh, an incident that happened in the park, uh, that was under investigation. So, with his release, we will probably be looking for someone else, uh, to fill that position, so.
Tom?
Yes, sir.
Who's been ongoing investigation against the county's civilian?
Uh, it, it's technically right now with the district attorney, and, um, two other ones. Anyway, it's within that term.
Sure.
And, and they're reviewing that, and as far as I know, there's been no decision yet. Let's see. We had some, our, our street repairs are still ongoing on Eighth Street where we filled in, or replaced our water line. Everybody was, I, I think they noticed the bumps in the road, it's the, you know, 'cause it's just a little canal, basically. So we're going back, and if you drive over them, they're smooth as glass, you can barely tell if there was anything that happened there. So our street guys are doing a wonderful job.
Was that within the last thirty minutes?
Uh, no, you're going over the wrong bumps, Bob. They've been working.
Oh, you gotta pick your section.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not completely done.
Yeah.
Kind of suffering.
Uh, but no, those, those guys are doing a wonderful job repairing those, those trenches. Uh, we should be done, I believe it was, uh, the end of the month, we should be done with all the, uh, the trenches that we've created in this. Uh, we are tearing down a house that was destroyed by the tornado, uh, it was Jubin Deeds Wilson. We're almost complete, uh, with that demo, or the demo. We should be, we're hoping to be finished with both houses by thirty-one July. So, uh, after that one, we'll, we'll start on Ms. Norma Bryan's, and start knocking it down. Incidentally, we're gonna try and get Ms. Norma Bryan into the housing, uh, grant where, well, we gotta apply for the grant in September, and we're hoping she qualifies under that. So she would be able to retain her property, and if she qualifies, we would build a house there on that same property. So, well, we're in hopes that we can get that done for her. Our health.
Sure, tell me your limit, I'm gonna check this, if you're, or whatever that is.
Well, in the program that we would get into, it would be, uh, we would get four houses a year, so you could, you're looking at one per quarter. And basically how it would be set up, and, uh, you'd have a contractor, like a general contractor, he would build a house, and then it would fund at the end of that, or completion of the house. Now, we've been looking at the mechanics of that grant, uh, and we've contacted, uh, the First National Bank to see if they'd be interested in setting up a loan, uh, for this grant, and only for this grant, where you could pay your contractors per milestone, that that keeps your contractor from going bankrupt during the building of this house. Traditionally, when, when the city and the county have tried to do this program, they'll get a contractor from. they'll get a contractor from a larger city like San Antonio or Houston. And a lot of times, they don't have the, the finances to actually live out the construction of the house. That happened to the county, and it took them, I think, six months to complete that. Contractor pulled off, it took them six months to find someone to complete it. And, and it was, it was a mess to the county. Uh, but we think, uh, looking at the mechanics, i- if we do it this way, we can continue on this half, one house per quarter, as long as we qualify for four a year. You know, for five years if we can. So, that give us...
With the exception of Donald, would you put him on the voting district?
Yeah, it just depends on who qualifies for all...
That's a...
Yeah, yeah.
Could all points at no cost because of the homeowner?
Uh, relatively. Now, I think the only thing they have to do is... Pay the taxes and actually...
Agree to maintain, I think, is...
Maintain it, but they, they have to live in that house for five years. And after five years, we can sell it, burn it to the ground, whatever they want to do. But, uh, it becomes totally theirs after five years.
It's a great program.
It is, it is a good program. We are, it'll open up in September, and we are, uh, we keeping tabs on it, making sure that we get in on that grant. It, it'd be a wonderful thing for the town to fill in some gaps and some neighborhoods. One of the requirements is, is that a current homeowner own property free and clear. That's, that's one of the requirements. So, someone like Norma Bryan, who has their property free and clear, had a tornado, I think she's over 62 or 65 or whatever. I, I really think she would qualify, which would be great for her, great for the community. You know, I mean, if you're gonna use a grant program, you know, we, we intend to use it to the fullest extent for the, you know, maximum benefit of the, of the individual and community. So... Let's see, where was it? Oh, health insurance bids. Last meeting, we opened our health insurance bids, uh, they're still under review. We still need to get with, uh, get a couple of details looked at. We, we plan for it to be on the August 5th agenda, which should be the next week, so... Our stand pipe, our water pipe, our, our water tower that was hit by the tornado, it's still under review by TML, our insurance company. I talked to, uh, our engineers last week, and, uh, TML is now asking for an additional third-party engineer to come out and look at the, uh, structural bolts in the concrete. And, which is a promising sign, because if they weren't looking at that or going that deep, then they wouldn't actually be looking at probably getting this new stand pipe. They would have been saying, well, it can be repaired and you can go forward. So...
I'm for that. They need to inspect that close.
Right. Also too, it's kind of telling us that there are some, some serious structural damage with the actual tower itself. Uh, now they're just measuring the anchor bolts in the concrete to see what that's gonna cost them, or what, what can be done, you know? So, uh, they're, they're encouraging, it's encouraging news, it's gonna take a couple of weeks to get somebody down here, review those, those items, and get a report back. Uh, so you're looking at another three, four-week turnaround yet. I mean, but, you know, uh, this could mean, uh, a great deal for us as far as going ahead and getting that new stand pipe without them trying to modify anything, so... Uh, it's very urgent for us. Senator Charles Perry is due to come through town, uh, we're gonna have a town hall meeting at, Soda Fountain on Main Street. It's gonna be on 6th August at 10:30.
To discuss what?
Uh, recent legislative session, uh, changes, mostly whatever Kudows he's done. You know, he's gonna transform, and, uh, but I expect there'll be quite a few people there, just to meet, meet and greet. Dave Becker said they're gonna have coffee tea and cookies, so get you a snickerdoodle. And, uh, let's see. Little fun fact here, we're having a family night at the pool, 24 July. They'll be showing legal and stitch. These, these family nights and the teen nights are going over really big with the public. Uh, we get this huge response. Last time we had a teen night with a movie, it was, I think we had, was it 87 or 127?
87.
87, uh, people show up, so I, I mean, for us, that's a big deal. I mean, that's, that's a lot of people. So, we're expecting a lot to turn up, uh, 24 July. We've acquired a pontoon boat. And, uh, what we would like to do is turn that pontoon boat into a swimming dock out of the lake. And, uh, it's gonna need a new deck, but once we put that deck on there, we can sit it out a little further, you know, from the beach, anchored down, and use it as a swimming platform. And, uh, I think the boat costs us $800, so it's not like we're breaking the bank there. But we've, we've been kicking it around, and it was cheaper doing it that way than actually building one and putting, you know, styrofoam under it or something like that. But it's just an added attraction since now, this year, we happen to have some water on the lake. So, uh, also too, on that note, we're gonna be looking for, uh, I, I think, the park, the lake park hadn't been used in a long time. There's probably some ordinances that we need to dig up. You know, no swimming zone at the beach, I mean, no, no, no body at the beach.
Nothing, no way. No way.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, no waves, no, and stuff like that. So, anyway, we're, we're, we gotta replace some signs out there that, as, as, uh, last weekend, there were a lot of people there, weekend before, I mean, so we've had a lot of, of people come to the, to the new lake, uh, park. So a lot of things have become apparent, that stuff we had remembered in a long time, you know? So, uh, we'll be working on that kind of as we go a little bit.
We're still going back and continuing to address the situation, but the, uh, getting, getting them to pay...
Yes, uh...
They have to park their players and get on the other...
Right, uh, the state parks have a, have a, a program where people can, can stay there and they're, like, as a park administrator, or, uh, you know, they, they, a volunteer. And, uh, someone that can take money, and that they set up their travel trailer and let out there for basically free. But they're making sure people pay their money and don't destroy the park, and, uh, we've been looking at that program really hard. We think it would benefit us a great deal. It would also benefit a lucky individual who might want to volunteer out there. Uh, but it, you know, we have a lot of people setting up out there camping, and, and we're not seeing the same income depicted by the traffic. So, there's a lot of people...
I know we're addressing it.
Still using it for free.
We're continuing to do this.
Right, right. And, uh, so, uh, anyway, we're looking at that program, we're already getting that instituted. If someone wants to place a travel trailer out there, be a park monitor, you know? Help a great deal.
That's monitoring, not upkeep.
They what?
That's monitoring, not upkeep.
Not really upkeep per se, just make sure it's not...
Getting rounds.
Destroyed, yeah. Make sure everybody's paying their, their, their fees, uh, make sure they're not, you know, doing donuts out there, or...
You know, dealing with...
It was the golf cart, go kart, 10 miles an hour down the center of the park.
Right, right. And, you know, I, I, you know, we have a crew to upkeep the park, uh, and, you know, for the most part, they did a really good job, especially way out there. You know, trash, you know, seems to be picked up pretty well, even after the Jabacawas holidays. And, uh, so, it's mostly just a monitor to make sure that things are going smooth, that, you know, they're not watching their boat at the beach, you know, stuff like that, so... But, uh, but it's been a long time since anybody's been able to use the lake, so it's, you know, some of these things are coming back up that, that we used to have, that, uh, everybody's forgotten about. We will have a TECQ inspection on our water super, our water treatment plant, uh, on 18 July at 11:30.
Sewer plant or sewer plant?
The sewer plant. Sewer treatment plant. We have four ponds out there, and, uh, we have two pivot systems. And, uh, so they're gonna come, just do an annual inspection, it's a regular inspection. We don't expect anything, uh, any changes or, or anything, or a shattering. We've had some issues with our pivots since I've got here. They've been neglected for a long time. And, uh, the, the pivots are made out of aluminum. The, uh, wastewater is very acidic and, and it's very corrosive. So, we're having to go through and, and really work on these pivots. There's been pumps and gears and leaks that, you know, we've had to work on, but we're slowly getting this back up to date. Uh, Frank, lander irrigation, we'll be here tomorrow, we're gonna take a full inventory. I know we need a couple of sprayer packages, uh, for these pivot systems, because what we have right now is allowing some cooling, which we really don't need. And, uh, but, I mean, it's just, it's little things, uh, an elbow here needs to be replaced, and, you know... We were out in the middle of going from rubber wheels to plastic wheels on the irrigation system, but, uh, we found that the plastic wheels were getting torn up worse than the rubber wheels, so now we're gonna go steel wheels. It's just, you know, little tweaks a- as we go along, so... Anyway, uh, part of the, the, we have a here, lander irrigation is hosting a, a class on how to maintenance some of this, these items too, because our water carpenters fairly new, uh, you know, they haven't been there very long, so... Uh, it's down maybe with equipment, some of the processes, the pumps, the heaters, motors. And, uh, so, uh, anyway, we'll, we'll be sending some of our water guys to there. Uh, and last but not least, uh, our mosquito containment program started July the 10th. We got our mosquito fogger in, we've got our, uh, chemical in, and we've been running, I think we've made three runs around the city. And, uh, I don't know if you can tell, but maybe in my mind, but I feel like I can tell that, you know, some vector control is working, and...
We did that nice, round through the city, because I haven't seen it.
Well, uh, it's gonna be from 6:00 to 10:00 in the morning, 6:00 to 10:00 at night. That's the schedule.
Well, you're sleeping, right?
Yeah. Actually, it's, it's not a traditional smoking fogger like, like we used to have. Uh, this fogger is, is different. Yeah, it's in the back.
Yeah. I saw that today.
Yeah, and, and you don't even really see the, the mist, I don't guess. I mean, I haven't been, but, uh... It, it'll look through, you can hear this machine going in the back, but, uh, it, it's not... You don't see the big...
That's something that we needed to know, because when we're asked, where are they, and we haven't seen them, we're gonna tell them it's not a fogger.
Right, right.
And that's the information we have to put in the chemical unit too.
It's called Control 44, and, and I'm not, I do not know what the scientific name of it's gonna be. But anybody who's interested can inquire, and they'll be happy to give it to them. We get it from a company called Univar Solutions, that's where we bought the fogger. And it's been very successful. Uh, the only thing we really have to watch is bees. If anybody has a bee hive, uh, this would wipe it out, so... The only person we know is on, I think, 15th or 16th.
In front of Higginbotham.
Well, I don't know if that's something they wanna keep. But there's an individual with a bee hive at, uh, that he has to keep those put off before we can go over there.
Is Brett not having the bees in here?
No.
Right, right. The only ones we know of in town that would affect is that gentleman on 16th.
16th?
16th, okay, so, uh, but, uh, he's aware of the schedule, so he can put his bees up. We're aware that he's there, so we can kind of scour his area, so, uh, we don't want to, uh, let him hurt his bees, so...
Run it behind Higginbotham, because for the best of the summers, he's had a wild bee hive at the top of the building.
Right, right.
The burgomann that calls you down.
Well, we have people that can go get those, so they're interested in getting right up.
The machine...
It will. We have some pictures here that were just kind of a last-minute ad. Uh, this is the water leak that we've had in South Ballenger. That's not it.
A lot more.
That's not it. You can see you got two pipes coming in, and then, well, actually three, and it creates a Y. What happened, the Y that was there slid, it's like a, like a wishbone. And, uh, nobody that we knew of had it installed, and so we could get one today. And, uh, anyway, so now we've got one, got it ready. This was as of about 4:00, so they should be through now getting that installed.
I remember when I had a discussion, is that water line under the riverbed or suspended from the bridge?
Under the riverbed, it is, for sure.
Well, it's moved years ago from under the bridge.
Right, right.
And it's still...
Still have a water room, it's still in there?
It is still in effect, uh, and, and a lot of it is because we took the pressure down. If you go below 20 PSI, uh, TCEQ requires you to issue a boil notice, which is why I was up here till 10 o'clock Friday night issuing that boil notice out to everybody. And, uh, anyway, uh, we typically run about 60 PSI. And the reason they require us to issue that is, uh, you've exposed your, your water system. You know, it's not coming straight out of the plant anymore, or, you know, it's...
It's not flushes, but it's probably...
Right, so...
Doesn't mean our water's terrible.
No, 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 it doesn't mean that you can sabotage it.
I just want to clarify that for the people that think that we have a water problem just because of this.
Right, right, and, and it's just basically TCEQ telling us...
No, I fully understand, I just, I'd find it easier to reiterate it for all of us.
Did you have to completely, when you change out the Y, you're gonna have to completely shut the water down to the south side.
That's what we have. We, every, it's, it was shut off when we went into session here. Uh, we were getting, we've been filming phone calls all day. And, you know, uh, when we put it out on the website, we tried to notify everybody we could, uh, through Snaxle website, KRM, other social...
After you get it repaired and back in service, are you gonna flush some of the lines going out there just for...
Right. What we'll do, once it's repaired, we flush some of the lines, we pressure it back up, you're gonna have air in there and stuff. Uh, but, uh, we will retest, uh, for, it's a back tea sample is what they call it. And, uh, once, and it takes a day for that to, to get the sample back, and then we will resend the boil notice.
Well, that's, I just wanted to get it out there so everybody understood. The lines will be flushed and the air taken out and you'll have good water and it will be tested. That way everybody knows in this meeting that that's what happened.
Yes, correct. Yes. And, can I give you anything else? Today. Right now. All right.
Here are a bunch of future dinner items from city councils. If you have anything else to get on that agenda, please. All right. Much to do, Jerry.
I'll wait for you.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we say out. All right. Thank you, thank you.